Good evening. We'll call to order the July 9th session of the York County Planning Commission. We appreciate you joining us tonight. Hopefully, everybody had an enjoyable 4th of July celebration. And with that, we'll go to roll call, please.
Mr. Church.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to read my little paragraph. You guys should get rid of me. The Code of Virginia requires local governments to have a planning commission, the purpose of which is to advise the Board of Supervisors on land use and planning issues affecting the county. This responsibility is exercised through recommendations conveyed by resolutions or other official means, and all are matters of public record. The commission is comprised of seven citizen volunteers appointed by the board, with one represented from each voting district and two at-large members. And with that, we'll do roll call.
Mr. Chamberlain.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Crainer.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Wassmer.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, the first item of business is approval of the minutes from the June 11th meeting. They've been distributed to us. Anybody have any comments, corrections? Hearing none is their motion.
I move. We accept the minutes as written.
All right. Roll call, please.
The motion by Mr. Crainer is to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting on June 11th, 2025. Mr. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Crainer.
Yes.
Mr. Wassmer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. The next item is election of officers for this next coming year. Before we do that, can I just say thank you to my fellow commissioners for trusting me this last year. It's been an honor and continues to be an honor to serve with you. I appreciate that. To Mr. Chamberlain, who stepped in several times in my absence, I appreciate that. And to the staff, you make this job easy for all of us. So you're always here, prepared, and make it easy for us to have all the information to make decisions we need to make. So thank you from me to all of you. And with that, we'll...
Gentlemen, good evening. Is there a recommendation or nomination for the position of chair for this board this evening?
I would like to nominate Mr. Chamberlain for chairman.
Or would you gentlemen care to discuss the nomination which is on the floor at this time?
No discussion here.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
May we have a roll call, please?
The motion by Mr. Crainer is to nominate Mr. Chamberlain as chair of the York County Planning Commission. Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Crainer.
Yes.
Mr. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Mr. Wassmer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. And with that, may we take up the consideration of the position of vice chair? Does anyone on the board wish to make a nomination for that position?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Skip Brooks for vice chairman.
Is there any discussion? Any further nominations? Would anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
May we have a roll call, please?
The motion by Mr. King is to nominate Mr. Brooks as vice chair of the York County Planning Commission. Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Crainer.
Yes.
Mr. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. Wassmer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your consideration in filling these two positions. Thank you to the outgoing chair and vice chair for your service. And I will cede the floor to the commission for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Do our musical chairs here while we get settled. So thank you all for nominating me to be chair for the next year. I appreciate that. And at this point, we'll open for citizen comments. Are there any citizens that wish to speak to the commission on an item not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move to our first public hearing. This is application ZT 211-25. Staff.
All right. Good evening. So this is a discussion of text amendments regarding plan development, recreation requirements, and then the performance standards for open space cluster subdivision development. Just a little recap. You all discussed the first draft of these revisions at your February 12th work session that immediately preceded the regular meeting, reviewed some staff suggestions, and then from that, we received some feedback and we further tweaked the proposed amendments to what you see before you tonight. These are mostly minor modifications, again, following that discussion. I'll point out where the changes were made from that first draft that you saw in February. And so with that, we're going to go ahead and dive into the proposed changes for recreation requirements for plan development. And what you can do is if you want to open up your PC 2520 resolution, you can follow along with me as I discuss these changes. So Section 241361 is the standards for residential plan developments. You hear that abbreviated as PDR often. And really, we're talking about recreation requirements. We're going to start with the open space. 25% of the land area in a PDR needs to be reserved as open space. Again, we didn't propose to change that. What we did propose to increase the required recreational area from 10% to 15% of the land area. What you'll notice is previously, there was a statement added to E1, which stated that if you have land that has wetlands or steep slopes or utility easements, that can be part of your open space. We added a clarification following your feedback to state that while you could have those areas, sensitive environmental areas, in your open space, that cannot be counted as part of your required recreational area because you cannot use it as such. For example, just a picture here, you see this is an open space, but it's encumbered by utility easements. We wouldn't want that to be counted as part of the required recreational area. Moving further down, 3B, there's a statement requiring this is for your access for bicycles and pedestrians. The previous word was just "good access." That's a little bit subjective and kind of vague. And so we updated that to say "safe and level" because that's what we're seeking. This is a bit of a recap, but we discussed a little further down, added a statement about stormwater ponds and clarifying that, you know, stormwater ponds, they're part of open space. However, if it doesn't have specific recreational amenities, that shouldn't be counted as part of your required recreational area. So a pond like this, while it might look nice, there isn't really a distinct recreational feature or amenity in this versus pond like this is structured to actually, you know, you have walking paths, you have, you know, like a water feature. Again, it's used as for recreational purpose. The biggest changes come in F, or what is now F, which is about the current mandatory recreational facilities. So as I mentioned in February, we have a couple of mandatory facilities that all PDRs have to have. They have to have an Olympic-sized pool, they have to have a tennis court, and they have to have a playfield. What we've seen over the years is not all of these amenities are exactly appropriate for every residential plan development. We've heard back from HOAs that they sometimes have cost troubles maintaining them or things like the pool are just not used. And so what we've proposed is to require these kinds of active and passive facilities, but loosening up the language to not require those exact facilities. Plan developments have to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. They get reviewed by you, they get reviewed by the board, and the amenities and recreational facilities that are proposed by the developer at that time. And so what we did is we created these broader categories, active recreation elements, passive recreation elements. And we have some example language in there, for example, like playgrounds, gardens, of those kinds of facilities. We're requiring both types, but we loosen the language to be, again, more on a case-by-case basis, specific to a proposed development that might come in. And again, we're still requiring that you construct walkways and trails, and you have linkages from your residential elements to these common areas and to the facilities. You'll see a change a little farther down, stating that if you're going to have a multi-use trail or a pedestrian walkway, it can't be made of mulch. We're requiring at a minimum a stone-dust surface, preferably asphalt. I'm going to skip a little further down now, so we're going to go down to F. You'll see a statement about private streets. Again, the clarification that you can't use on-street parking to supplement your required off-street parking, and your street has to be wide enough to meet VDOT standard. And a clarification that you also, particularly with private streets, walkways, sidewalks need to be on both sides of the streets. And this comes from past developments where sidewalks have only been on one side of the I'll talk about this briefly because we discussed it at February. Right now, there's an affordable housing incentive provision, and the way that's written right now, it could allow a developer to eliminate open space in rec area. We don't feel like that's appropriate. And even if you have a development that comes in that structures affordable housing and has that incentive, they should still have a degree of open space in rec area. So we've just really removed the ability to just get rid of any open space. So we move forward now to 361-1. These are the standards for plan development mixed use, or PDMUs. We're not proposing to change the required land area for open space or the requirement for a village green because that's very integral to the structure of these kinds of developments. We have added some clarifying language regarding walkway connectivity. We want the residential elements and PDMUs to be connected to the commercial elements and to facilitate safe access. And so just again, adding that clarifying language. We've also added to G3 that if you have an apartment within a PDMU, they're also going to be subject to the performance standards for multifamily dwellings. What we saw when these apartments would get proposed and come in, that sometimes the developer, he wouldn't be aware of it until he got to the site plan. So we want to make it very clear upfront that, yes, while you're in a PDMU, you also have to meet these performance standards that are applicable to multifamily dwellings. And so there's things like, you know, there's like a landscape yard around the building and things like that that they would need to meet. So with that, I'm going to move forward to our performance standards for open space development. You'll hear this referred to a lot as cluster subdivision as well. This Section 241402, this is the performance standards for these by right developments. Again, they function in tandem with subdivision ordinance regulations. And what we're proposing with these revisions is partially to address some guidance in the comp plan and then also just incorporate some language updates. And a lot of it's actually formatting, just reformatting things to make it more readable. You've seen this already, more recap for the benefit of those who may be watching. Just wanted to kind of explain the difference between a conventional subdivision and a cluster subdivision. A conventional subdivision is developed in which the lots are the underlying zoning districts. So for example, if you have a rural residential, it has to be 1 acre, 150 feet wide. Cluster's a little different in that when you have cluster development, you have a certain reservation of common open space. And while the underlying density doesn't change, you have smaller lots and different setbacks and things like that. And so again, the idea there is that houses are clustered together and you have more common open space as a result of that. So those are the kind of the core components of our ordinance, is again, the common open space, you have that requirement as well as recreation area. There aren't minimum lot dimensions. We do have minimum setbacks, such as 30-foot front setback, and then a requirement for that perimeter open space strip. Right now, that's 45 feet. I'm going to talk a little bit about that in the next slide. So I want to talk a little bit about, you see at the front, kind of the start of the ordinance there, we have a change in the gross land area. And so this kind of stems from guidance in the environmental element of the comp plan that discusses, you know, while a minimum of 10 acres required for cluster subdivision, you know, the county's getting built out and the availability of larger tracts is decreasing. So what about 5 to 9 acres? There's a lot of land that's in that 8, 9-acre area that could be appropriate. And so what we did is we said, okay, let's look at that statement and let's see, like, how much land is actually available for that. You'll note in February, I ran kind of an analysis of vacant parcels, and rightfully was pointed out that, you know, you could have an occupied parcel that's maybe 6 acres with a house that could redevelop potentially to a cluster subdivision should we pass this. And so I updated that analysis to include both vacant and occupied parcels and produce these maps. So this is the lower county. I tried to show on the map, this is in your packet as well, the occupied parcels are in green and then the vacant are in purple with kind of some color grading for the 5 to 9 and 10 to 49 and kind of showing you where those are. I do want to note also that if you look at the map, you'll see a lot of, for example, some of these vacant occupied parcels, they have the, like, raw acreage, but they're really skinny. And so unless all of these people decided, we're all going to maybe agree to sell our land to the same person and then vacate the boundary lines, it's not really realistic that this single parcel would develop as a cluster subdivision. It's just not dimensionally, wouldn't be appropriate for it. Just kind of a similar exercise in the upper county. Oh, I didn't mean to go forward that fast. You see, some of the larger tracts are obviously in the upper county, especially in the Skimino area. And you have kind of a similar issue. I just wanted to highlight, example, these, like, long skinny parcels that really couldn't support a cluster development due to how they're dimensionally shaped. But another thing you'll see too is in some of these areas, there's like a lack of public utilities as well. So they're likely not to develop as a cluster subdivision unless public, like, sewer is extended. But what we kind of found from that, and I get into that a little more in the staff report, but there's actually a fair number of parcels between 5 and 9 acres that could be appropriate. And so the second part of what we did is we have to look at the multipliers and see if that works, if you lessen the gross acreage. Again, you already saw this kind of calculation in February, but what the multipliers are, are essentially calculations we run to determine kind of what your density could be. And when I say density, again, we're not changing the underlying density, it just kind of gives you your lot yield. What that accounts for though, is you do have to take some of the gross land area away to, like, build your road, for example. That's 50-foot right-of-way. And so we ran a calculation of, okay, if you had a 5-acre parcel, run it by the multiplier, it's applicable to R20. How, what would be your lot yield versus 10-acre zone the same way? Run that calculation, what would you get, 918 lots? So it ended up being pretty proportional, and we ran this for like RR, R20, R13. And so we decided not to really mess with the multiplier because, again, like, the width of the road isn't going to change if you have an 8-acre subdivision. You still have to have a 50-foot right-of-way. So I'm going to jump down to C. You'll see that there's that, on your ordinance, a big blue chart and a lot of red underneath it. A lot of this, what we did is we took the existing design and yard standards, I just took it out of paragraph form, and we put it into this chart to make it a little bit easier to read. And most of those requirements are unchanged. I do want to highlight one that we did change. It's regarding the perimeter buffer. So if you do not abut another open space development, you have to have a perimeter strip surrounding your development. Right now, that's 45 feet. You have to leave it wooded. And if it's cleared for some reason, you have to replant it at a type 25 buffer. And what we're kind of seeing with that is you end up with this little stand of trees. And there's concerns with, you know, the homeowners that are existing that, okay, well, now I have trees that are dying because they're exposed and I don't want to fall on my property. Or the winter comes and it doesn't really provide the buffering effect it needs. And so what we propose is 35-foot buffer strip, and this would be a transitional buffer, so it has to be planted to meet that standard with evergreen trees. And it provides a better screening effect. So move forward to another change we made, and you'll see this as, it would be under that C, what is now 4, regarding recreation components within cluster subdivision. One change we made following between the work session and now, after feedback, what we originally changed was we looked at, okay, what kind of amenities are required within cluster subdivisions? And it was like, you have to have a playground, you have to have picnic areas, and things that, again, if we're looking at reducing the gross acreage, you could have a 4 or 5-lot subdivision. And we spoke, I spoke with a lot of different HOAs before February. I spoke to small developments, larger, and with the smaller ones, there's an issue of, okay, there's only 6 lots, and we just don't have the capacity to support the same kind of amenities that a much larger subdivision could. And so what we did is we kind of changed the language to allow a bit more flexibility of what gets put in. What we did change though, between now and February, is tightening the language up to say that you still have to have an active and a passive component. You can't just put a grass field in, call it a playfield, and call it a day. You need to do something that has both of those components, but can be appropriately scaled to the size of the development. I'll touch on these very briefly, since we discussed them in February. There's an existing density credit where you can increase your, if you increase your recreation area above the minimum. This wouldn't really function as intended if you did it for a smaller gross area, so we changed that language to state that you can only really utilize this credit if you have a development that's over 10 acres in size. There's an existing public facility credit, so that's, you know, I develop and I donate land to be some, like a library or a school, and I get an open space credit for that. When I look back about 30 years of by right residential subdivision, I did not see this utilized. I don't foresee it being utilized in the future. So we decided to go ahead and remove that from the ordinance. And then finally, this is just a statement that, again, if you have a smaller subdivision, less than 10 acres in size, again, you're going to have 4, 5, 6, maybe 7 lots. That can't support a private street. The maintenance costs on the HOA would be burdensome, and so we're just clarifying that you have to put in a public street that's maintained by VDOT and accepted into the secondary Kind of to wrap all that up, what we've really done here is we've modernized standards for recreation area, and really, we've just clarified formatting. We haven't made any, I wouldn't say massive changes, though one of the bigger ones, again, is that change of gross area. But considering that, looking forward, you know, we want to look at, okay, where can we do, we need housing, where would it be appropriate? Maybe some of these infill areas for new single-family housing, where it could be supported, but it's not going to, like, change the character of the area or make it really affect the density. And so therefore, we're recommending approval of PC 2520. And I'm here if you have any questions for us. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Anybody? None? All right. Thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing. I have no sheets. Does anybody wish to speak to this issue? Good evening. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Anne Gregorian. I live at 117 Baldrick in Yorktown, Grafton area. And I wanted, sorry I didn't sign up, I wanted to hear. I was trying to read through the material online. It was a little confusing. But I would like to say that I oppose this change. I feel that we have the comprehensive plan, excuse me, we have the comprehensive plan that has been worked on, and we seem to keep modifying it in deference to developers. And I think 5 acres to put cluster housing in, when the original amount was 10 acres, is just another example of modifying our plan to accommodate the development of high-density housing in York County. And I don't think that our schools right now can handle that. And I would just like to say I disagree with reducing it to 5 acres. I think that people should be putting single-family homes in there, subdividing it for, you know, a lot size. And I'm concerned that there's no minimum lot size on any of these developments. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? With that, I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Just one comment, actually several. Thank you, staff. It was a wonderful presentation, you know, well-presented. I feel there is a need for some more, I'll use the term loosely, affordable housing. And any way we can get to that end would be a good move. And I would support the ability. I'd also like to point out, and perhaps I may need to abstain on the voting, because I do own 2 of the parcels that are on the map, that are in that 5 to 10-acre area. But I think it's a good idea.
Mr. King? Mr. Wassmer?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Yep, none. I will point out, just to clarify with staff too, any of these would require a special use permit?
Are you speaking about... Are you speaking in regard to the cluster development performance standards specifically or the PD?
Yes, and the PD, the PDMU requires that as well, right?
Yes, so both PDR and PDMU are not allowed by, that has to be a board action because of the nature of the thing.
But cluster is allowed by right?
Cluster is allowed by right, yes.
All right. Thank you. Take a motion?
I'll move 2520.
Roll call, please.
The motion by Mr. Wassmer is to adopt resolution PC 25-20. Mr. Crainer.
Abstain.
Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Wassmer.
Yes.
Mr. Chamberlain.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Any old business? New business? None? Nope. Staff report?
Staff reports, all right. So you all have your development activity report, and there's been quite a lot of things going on over the last month that I just wanted to make you aware of. So recent, under recent board actions, the board did approve the data center ordinance at their last meeting, so we now have the ability to regulate those when they come in. They also approved the S3 application, which was the mini-storage Recreation Vehicle Storage down on 17. And I will say, we just got their site plan in. So they moved pretty quickly after their approval, and they're looking to get done quick, pretty fast. The board also approved the American Battlefield Trust Trail out there on Crawford Road. We saw, we had 3 applications come in to extend their special use permit deadline. That was the Dodd RV, Carson Group one there, Flippin' Flea, which was that shed, storage, coffee place up in, off of Moretown Road, and then Natasha House also. Got an extension on theirs that had been sitting out there. And while most of those, the reason we saw a lot of those is because the General Assembly had for several years extended deadlines since, like, 2005, I think it was. So anything that was approved back in that day was basically, kept moving forward or could move forward, and so there was no need to extend the special use permits. But this year, that elapsed, and they did not pass anything that kept it going. So that's why we saw multiple applications coming in. Coming before the board at their next meeting will be the Virginia Natural Gas application, the standards for parking regulations that you all approved at your last meeting, as well as the amendments for the indoor firing ranges. And then they should take up, again, the overgrowth ordinance that went through. They've been talking about that at several of their last meetings, and we're hoping that this will be the last one. They'll be able to make some decision whether or not they're going to approve that overgrowth ordinance or not. So scheduled for your next meeting, we have basically 2 applications. One is a, which we haven't, we haven't never seen in before, but it's been in our ordinance. We have a fortune teller, which is a special use permit requirement that'll be coming in. She had been operating, not realizing that she had added that use to her business license, and we discovered it, and she is now coming forward to get approval for that.
Should be pretty easy. She already knows the outcome.
She should know the outcome, yes. Good point, Mr. King. Thank you. And then also, we'll have the housekeeping amendments, which is, you know, something that we hadn't done over the past years, but we're trying to do every year, which just kind of cleans up the ordinance where we see issues come up every year. So just a few little things in there that'll be coming forward. As far as, oh, and I'm sorry, one other thing, the small modular reactors will be coming for you. This was a request from the board to look at these new nuclear devices on a much smaller scale, and how do we regulate them? And so the staff has done some research, and they'll be bringing that forward to you at your next meeting to move forward as an amendment to the ordinance, adding that to the ordinance. And then as far as recent site plans that were approved, I thought you'd have an interest in. One is the Grand Oak Senior Housing Apartments up there off of Old Moretown Road. They had been required to put in a pedestrian access over to Centerra, so that they're, the people that live there, who mostly don't have transportation, can make it over and ride the bus and things of that nature. So their, the site plan to approve that pedestrian access was recently approved. And then also, the Kings Creek Solar Farm site plan was approved recently. So they, they're moving forward quickly to get their limited, or their land disturbance activity permit, so they can start putting in those solar panels. And then by the end of the year, I believe, is what they're looking forward to. The rest of it, I'll let you look through, but there wasn't anything that really came before you all that was of highlight. But if there's anything on there that you'd wish me to talk about, I'd be happy to do that.
All right. Thank you. Any committee reports, commission reports? Any committee reports, commission reports? Seeing none, this planning commission meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.